Sorry about that, everyone. Good evening, Boulder City Council members. It is so great to see you all today. I'm guessing everyone can hear me? Wonderful. So great to see you all. Rob Anderson, proud superintendent here of the Boulder Valley School District. Why don't we start, if that makes sense, with introductions? We'll start with the BVSD Board. I know that we have a couple of our board members joining virtually. And then if City Council will introduce yourselves, and then we can have a discussion about what we want to talk about. We've got some topics we're happy to present, and I know that there were a couple of things that you all wanted to discuss with us as well. So we're excited to be with you here this evening. And so we'll start with BVSD Board, and I'll start to my left, which is Richard Garcia. Yeah, microphone.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Richard Garcia, board member, and I represent District G, which is Lafayette, Erie, and a little scratch of Lewisville. Nice to see you all.
Hi, I'm Stacy Ziss. I represent District E, which is mostly north Boulder, and happy to be with you.
Hi, everyone. I'm Kathy Gebhardt. I represent District C, which is kind of west Boulder, and I am the board president. And I'm sharing my screen with Beth, so we're kind of splitting this because Beth's computer got possessed by gremlins.
Thank you. Great introduction. Hi, everyone. I'm Beth Niznik. I am representing District E, which is primarily Lewisville and a little bit of eastern Boulder. Good to see you all tonight.
Hi, everyone. Nicole Rajapal. I represent northwest Boulder and some of the communities in our foothills, and happy to have this conversation with you here tonight.
Lisa, then Kitty, if you'd like to introduce yourselves.
Hi, Lisa Sweeney Moran, Vice President, Board of Education, District A, which is sort of southeast-central part of Boulder.
And I'm unsure if Kitty Sargent is on with us yet. She's a board member representing Superior, Broomfield, and she will probably be joining us mid-meeting. And so with that, Nuria, I'm guessing you're on the call. Would you like to have City Council introduce themselves?
I am, and I apologize. I'm sorry. I'm having some technical difficulties, and I'm not able myself to turn my camera on. But I will turn it to Mayor Protem Friend, who is taking, unfortunately for a mayor who's not feeling well, taking lead. Rachel?
Thanks, Nuria. I assume the unfortunate is for Aaron's illness.
Yeah.
Me taking the lead.
It was indeed.
But I like to imagine you laughing. Hi, everyone. I'm Rachel Friend, and Mayor Protem. And again, Mayor Brockett is home ill right now, so he is sorry to miss this. And I think I'll just call on people one at a time, because I don't, that passing the baton often doesn't work in these situations. So Mark?
Good evening. My name's Mark Wallach, member of Boulder City Council. And after 10 days of COVID, it is frankly delightful to see anyone. So thank you.
So glad you're better. Bob?
Hi, I'm Bob Yates. I'm a member of Boulder City Council. I've been on council for about six and a half years. And unlike the school board, all of us on council represent the entire city of Boulder, so I'm proud to represent all 107,000 residents of Boulder.
Thanks, Bob. I think I said Junie in here.
Thank you, Rachel. Junie Joseph, council member. I'm not feeling well, so I'm keeping my camera off, but I'm happy to be here, and I will just be listening, and thank you so much.
Thanks for being here sick, Junie. Nicole?
Hey, everyone. Nice to be here. Nicole Spear, Boulder City Council.
Matt?
Matt Benjamin, Boulder City Council. And my son Mason just started kindergarten at Bear Creek, so we are a BVSD family.
Awesome. Lauren?
Hi, everyone. I'm Lauren Folkerts, and I'm so excited to be here with you all today.
And last, but certainly not least, I think Tara is also here.
Hi, everyone. Tara Weiner, Boulder City Council. Really happy to be here today.
And with that, if I missed anyone, please speak up. Otherwise, I think I turn it back over to Rob.
Thanks, Rachel. So we, as I shared, we do have some slides we can share, and certainly want to create some time for conversation. I was able to connect with Carl yesterday at our quarterly meeting with CU, City of Boulder, Boulder County. And he shared that you'd wanted to certainly talk about transportation, maybe some other topics. But I'm happy to spend about five minutes talking about some things that are really important in our world right now, and answer any questions that you might have. We also have some of our staff on standby for, if you have any more technical questions, I'll keep things at a pretty high level. And then we can move to conversation. How does that, how does that sound for everybody? Wonderful.
That sounds great. You want to let me know when is a good time to just ask for additional agenda items? I will tee them up then.
Whenever, Rachel, you think that would, that would be appropriate. Because if we want to do it now, then I'd know where to spend more time or less time if there's topics that we're going to speak to that folks are interested in, or if there's other topics that we haven't put on there, then I can, I know I could get my pace right.
Okay. Well, I'll lift up just one, and I don't know if other council members have any, but I don't think it's on here. I want to make sure that we touch base on 6500 Arapahoe Annexation. That's a priority for the city that's been in the works for, I think, two and a half years. And we're hoping, I think, to get that across the finish line in the near future, and want to ask if maybe it would help to have some senior leadership maybe meeting on that routinely in the coming months. That's one, one thing I know we want to hit on. I see Matt's got a hand up.
Thanks, Rachel. You know, with the enrollment update, I think it just, whether it's acknowledging or we get into the topic, that housing and enrollment are intrinsically connected. And so at least making sure that when we talk about enrollment, we are also talking about the housing needs in our community to maintain that and keep our schools thriving.
And I see Bob.
Yeah, Rob, one other thing. Steve Redfern is on. He's the Deputy Chief of Police. And Rob, if you can give him a minute or two to make a presentation on what the police have been doing with respect to areas around Boulder High School, I think the community would appreciate that.
That looks like it from our side. Thanks, everyone.
Those are wonderful additions. It looks like Nicole has her hand raised.
I apologize. I was a little slow on the uptake. The only thing I just wanted to elevate was, if we have time, thinking around some of the legislation that's happening around the country to sort of govern what schools cannot, can and cannot do with regard to equity. And I am just curious about kind of where BVSD is within that national context, and anything, kind of especially at the state level, that, you know, cities and communities. And BVSD could support for our kids who are sometimes marginalized. Thank you.
Another excellent addition. Thank you. So council members, we are in our third year of our strategic plan altogether for all students. It is, it is tied into our community values and our mission around equity and excellence, making sure that we hold each and every student to high standard and give them what they need to be successful. Three big themes: we want to make sure that all kids are challenged and have relevant educational opportunities. We are laser-like focused on reducing disparities in achievement and opportunity. And really, and we'll speak a little bit about this later in regards to Graduation Plus, we want to make sure that when kids graduate from BVSD, they have not just a high school diploma, but all the skills they need to be successful in what is an ever-changing world. And so much of the work that we've been doing over the past three years is really aligned to this overarching strategy. We have 13 initiatives that align with that. But these are the big ideas and the things that we're aligning our budgets to, our strategy, and our efforts on a day-to-day basis. Really four buckets in which the work is happening: challenging, engaging relevant instruction, making sure that we customize the supports. One size does not fit all for kids or for schools, and we've worked really diligently to make sure that we're providing the right amount of resource for the needs, regardless of what those are within our community. We know that we have to partner with our community and our families to achieve these goals. And incredibly important for us that all kids get to learn, all of our employees get to work in what's a positive and inclusive culture. So the first topic beyond our strategic plan would be talking, talking to you in regards to our enrollment trends. As you could see when this, in this graph, that COVID certainly has impacted us, and we expect to continue a moderate decline in enrollment. The past couple of years, we've lost, you know, it looks like about 1,000 to 2,000 students. Am I reading that correctly? Around 1,000 to 2,000 students. Much of that pandemic impacted. We did recover some students this past year. I think that there's lots of things that are impacting our enrollment trend. Birth rates, which I believe we're going to talk about in a moment. Matt, you alluded to this, the increased prices in housing, especially for families with young children. You know, the lack of affordable housing for families is certainly impacting us, and just the overall birth rate decline in Colorado and in Boulder County. Here's a little bit more of the data on birth rates. As you could see, Boulder birth rates are significantly down. Our East County BVSD birth rates down, but not as much. We are seeing a unique trend, and I believe this is coming up in a future side, where while we do have declining enrollment as a district, there are parts of our district in the east part of our county that are actually growing and increasing pretty significantly. And so it's, it's almost, you know, we've got, we've got pretty significant declining enrollment, Superior, Lewisville, and in Boulder, and in Lafayette, Broomfield, and Erie, we're seeing increases in enrollment. And it's really starting, the bubble has started in kindergarten and is starting to impact our elementary schools, and will begin to start to impact our middle and high schools over time. We had some pretty significantly large cohorts over the past couple of years in our high schools. You're going to see that trend starting to decline with less kids in high schools as that bubble of less students begins to move through our system. On this graph, you can see the high is the top of the dark blue graph. The historical 10-year low is, is the line in light blue. And then the white square lets you know where we were this, this year, and the triangles where we're projected, is where we were projected to be. So came in under projection for kindergarten in most of our grades, a couple hundred students under projection. For us, you know, we, we generate revenue based on student count through the state. Around every 100 students who doesn't show up is about $1 million in our budget, just for context. As you can see, this talks about the differences in the areas of our community in regards to the regional resident K-12 student change. You can see where we are to projected total students. You'll see the big dip in 2020 because of the pandemic, and we did recover a lot of those students, but not all of those students. And dark blue is Boulder. East County is light blue. So as you could see in 2021, significant drop in Boulder, flat in East County, and, but still under projection from where we thought we were going to be. And this just gives a little more detail for the council in regards to how our elementary students have changed by community. Again, if you see that Lafayette, Erie bar, that bar is way up. Again, sharing with you all, you know, the stark difference from the very dark blue bar, which is Boulder, which is, is our biggest decrease in elementary school. And so I'll pause there. You know, highlights of enrollment is we are in declining enrollment. The board and I are committed to really thinking about what declining enrollment means for our school district and for our community. We'll be putting together a working group over the course of the next year. Certainly will involve the city as appropriate to begin to start to wrestle with what are our options in regards to declining enrollment as a school district. I think things get really complicated in ways that maybe some people don't understand with open enrollment. And for those of you who have kids or have had kids in our system or in Colorado, you understand the Colorado law allows for parents to opt into schools that are not necessarily their homeschool, if there's space. And that could be within a district or outside the district, anywhere in the state. And we have a pretty in-depth open enrollment policy. One in three parents in Boulder Valley opts to go to a school outside of their homeschool. So in other systems, you know, you might just be able to draw attendance lines and maybe kind of even things out. It becomes much more complicated with open enrollment attendance lines. We also have special academic programs where some of our schools are 100% choice. Some of our attendance zones overlap two schools where folks have, have a choice of what school they want to go to. I would say over the years, we've, I think the district has tried to adapt, you know, in certain ways at certain times to solve problems. And we really are going to try to have to untangle this knot over the course of the next year to really see where things are, and how do we address declining enrollment in our school system and ensure that kids are still getting everything they need from their schools and from their education. So I'll pause there to see if there's any questions. We also have Glenn Segrew, who's our demographer, and is the one who developed all these graphs. If anybody has any more specific questions, I'm sure he'd be able to answer those as well.
I'm not seeing any hands up from our side.
And our side has already seen this presentation, so I'm guessing, I'm guessing they'll be okay. For our next topic, Laura, if you could go ahead and pull up the back, the presentation. Another big effort that we've taken on this past year is capital planning and looking at our facilities. For those that were involved in 2014, you realize that Boulder passed the largest bond at the time in the state of Colorado. And we would want to just give you a quick couple of updates on how well we felt like that went. I think we were, we did a great job of using taxpayer dollars to make sure that we improved our facilities and improved our conditions for both teaching and learning in the school system. We have completed 62 of 63 projects. We were able to build five new schools, really created innovations at each of our schools. Each school got innovation dollars to create innovative learning environments in their school. We really used this bond to help meet some of our big sustainability goals. Overall, our buildings were 24% more efficient after bond construction. We did a great job in regards to waste diversion. With 51% of projects having greater than 75% waste diversion, we were able to increase our electric vehicle charging stations that support both, you know, not only in our, in our transportation center, but also in schools. We were able to accomplish major, major work within our master plan, including putting in artificial turf fields, major mechanical upgrades. We're able to outfit our schools to be well-prepared to handle full-day kindergarten and preschool programs that are expanding. And we implemented, or put into our classrooms, a system called audio enhancement, which actually gives the teacher a speaker and their, a microphone and speakers in the class that allows teachers to project without changing their tone, which creates better culture, more calm classrooms, and allows kids to be able to hear regardless of where they are in the classroom. And we feel like that's a huge, huge benefit for our kids. Took care of the things that you have to take care of in regards to deferred maintenance, roofs, electrical plumbing windows. And then we were able to address some additional critical needs for schools and districts. Boulder Rec Fieldhouse was able to be redone. We were able to allocate for inflation. All said and done, based on what we projected our projects to be and what our projects ended up costing, we were within 1% over the course of eight years in a 500-plus-million-dollar project, which is just incredible, incredible management, project management, managing of those funds. We've been able to implement and put air conditioning in all of our schools, except for our mountain schools, put in interior cameras at high schools, which have helped with safety. We were able to replace Justice High. We did a major renovation at Centaurus. Uni Hill, University Hill, we added onto their cafeteria, which was incredibly small, and now they have space where kids can eat, and they're not having to start to eat lunch at 9:00 in the morning. We purchased transportation site, roof gems, did a lot of work during that bond, lots to be proud of. I believe that I really want to thank our taxpayers for supporting that bond, and just want to just emphasize the amount of value that I believe our community received from those funds. So over this past year, now that our 2014 bond is wrapping up, we've done a facility assessment to look at a couple of things. First, those deferred maintenance items, where you have those critical building systems that need to be replaced or at the end of their life cycle. And so we've identified needs from one year to 10 years out. Over the course of the next two years, we've identified around $100 million in needs with over about 1,200 requirements. And then three and four years out, that those numbers grow exponentially. Each of those numbers is individual. They're not cumulative, so year one would be $43 million, year two would be $77 million in addition to the $43 million, and so on. Go back one, Laura, sorry. Just some examples of things that we're seeing, whether it's, you know, exterior repair, parking lots, our chilled water pumps, boilers. These are the types of things that we're seeing in our system. And even with the big investments that we made in 2014, we still have these, these major challenges with our facilities. And to remind council, we do not receive any money from the state in regards to help us improve and keep up with our facilities, that the mechanism is either to fund through general fund dollars, which then defer dollars from the classroom, or to go to voters through bond measures to be able to pay for facility improvements. The one project, you notice that we talked about 62 of 63 projects. The one project that we did not finish was New Vista High School. The reason we didn't finish New Vista High School is we'd only allotted about $14 million to upgrade the facility. And after looking at the life cycle of the building and looking at the dollars that we invested, and engaging that community, students, teachers, parents, we decided that we would take those dollars, hold them aside, and find another way to, to gain the additional dollars we would need to rebuild New Vista High School. And so we've had, we've, we've set aside that budget. We're still contemplating how we get the additional funds. And what you're seeing is the schematic design. This is not necessarily what the school would look like, but you get the idea, a new renovated, modern building that would match the innovative practices that are happening in New Vista High School each and every day. So we presented this to the board a couple of months ago. We are refining a shortlist of our immediate needs. We've talked about New Vista. We've talked about the facility assessment identifying needs. We're also assessing the growth out in Erie, Meadowlark School, which is a K-8 school that's fairly new, is already at 100% capacity. We expect that capacity to continue to expand, as that's the one area of growth in our, in our district. There's a new, a new subdivision, Parkdale, which is going to begin to start building homes starting this year that we believe will throw us over capacity. We're actually, are projecting that we're going to need a new school out in Erie. And so we know that these are the needs. Also some programmatic identified needs. We have some efforts going on within our district to expand access to career technical education, bilingual education. So there's some programmatic needs as well that we're, we are assessing. And we're going to go out to our community and do some engagement through our Capital Improvement Review Committee, and then do some polling and surveying, and bring that information back to the board at the end of May to think about what next steps might be. Would we might consider going for a bond in 2022? Are there other, has the information told us that we're not ready to do that? So more to come there, but that's kind of where we are in the process in assessing our, our capital planning needs. So that was a lot. I'll pause there and see if anyone has any questions.
I'm not seeing any. We're usually not too shy if we have them.
All right. Well, I'm going to keep going at this pace, and hopefully I'm not speaking too fast. It's confusing folks, and that's why you don't have questions. But I'm really trying to be mindful of our time here, so I apologize if I'm, if I'm going too fast. The last thing I'd love to talk to you all about is a big idea that we have been, we've rolled out to our district and our community this past spring called Graduation or Grad+ plus. As we think about preparing our kids for their future, we know, and we've seen this as we analyze just what's happened in the world of work with hiring shortages, career changes, that the world of work is changing underneath our feet. And we know as educators that we need to change and adjust what we do to prepare the kids for the world they're going to enter, not the world that we grew up in, right? And we think that there's big differences in that. And we also know that while a high school diploma is certainly important, that we need to plan to prepare kids beyond the high school diploma to really prepare them for life after high school. So what we've, what we've established is a vision for all students called Grad+. The idea being that in addition to a high school diploma, our hope is that all graduates from the Boulder Valley School District earn one or multiple of these, of credentials in these areas. One, that all kids get an opportunity to take an APIB, a concurrent enrollment course, so they can earn college credit in a really safe space, so that prepares them for going off to college if that's what their hopes and dreams are. That we feel like all kids should be able to gain some type of work-based experience prior to leaving high school, and whether that's a job shadow, whether that's participating in job embedded field trips, internships, apprenticeships. We feel like those are huge value adds for kids as they start to think about what it is that they want to do after high school. And, and that can be beneficial if they want to go right to work, or if they want to head on to college. We want more students to have the opportunity to earn industry certifications while in high school by completing career pathways and passing industry certification exams. Big idea here is that this prepares kids for work. We know that there's many high-paying jobs in our community across the state of Colorado that students can get if they have the right certifications right after high school. Some may jump into the career of their dreams. Others may find they want to get a certification so they can have a high-paying job as they work their way through college. Whatever their pathway might be, we want to make sure that we're preparing them. And then finally, we want to increase the number of students in our community that earn the seal of bilinguacy. We know and understand the true value of being bilingual to all of our students, and we want to make sure that we're expanding pathways so we have clear K-12 pathways and opportunities for all kids who want to graduate bilingual to begin to start those programs early and build those skills over time. And so our hope is with Grad+, we create a vision for our secondary schools, for our middle schools, for our elementary schools, for our community, on what we hope kids can get, what the value add of the Boulder Valley School District is for students who attend our schools and graduate from our high schools. So that, that was a big idea that I rolled out in two minutes. So I'm happy to answer any questions there. And then if there are no questions, I think we can jump into the conversation, Rachel, if that works for you. And I know that you all want to talk about transportation, housing. We wanted to sure, to give your Chief of Police a little bit of time and then talk about the annexation. So if there's no other questions, if there are questions, I'll answer them. If not, I'm happy to turn the agenda over to the group to begin to speak. But it looks like Nicole does have a question.
Yeah, specifically my question is just about, I'm so excited about the Grad+ program. And I was just wondering about the, the types of skills the students are going to be learning. I, you know, I'm thinking about some of the things we need in our county, workforce shortages in healthcare, mental health, like those kinds of things. in healthcare, mental health, like those kinds of things. Are any of the workforce shortages that we have in Boulder County, the kinds of things that you all are thinking about with regard to building out these programs?
That's the driver, right? We want to make sure that we're giving kids skills that allow them to stay here in Boulder County, serve their community, and get to work. So, whether it's in the medical field, computer science, advanced manufacturing, in some of the digital art graphic design space, our team is working closely with both the chamber and industry, our industry partners. We have an industry advisory group that helps us to define what those programs need to be. We project out what the workforce needs are going to be, and then, we build programs that will allow our students to fill those needs within our community.
Thank you.
Thanks, Rob. I think pressed forward, I imagine that we're all trying to be just super sensitive to how short our time is. So, thanks for, we're trying to keep up.
Wonderful. So, the first topic that I know that you all had shared was that you wanted to discuss with us is transportation. So, I'll put that out there. I will let whoever from Boulder City Council brought that topic up take the lead, and then we can have a conversation.
I don't know who brought that up. Was it?
I believe that was Matt to Carl. Matt?
I was trying to politely raise my hand versus jump in. Yeah, so thanks, Rob. I appreciate that segue and certainly the presentation. It's great to see the work that's happening, but there's also some sobering realities that we certainly would welcome working together with in order to tackle for the health of our community going forward. And transportation is certainly one of them. I think, you know, as we look at modifying our transportation goals in light of our dealing with climate change and reducing our vehicle miles traveled and our greenhouse gas emissions, but also recognizing that school choice helps to balance out enrollment throughout BVSD, we are arriving at perhaps some goals that are in conflict with one another. And so, how do we start thinking about building whole communities where we're not having to transport people all over the place to sort of maintain some of the enrollment? And that's where transportation, enrollment, housing, as we talk about in the city, are intrinsically connected, but they also are for the vitality of our schools. And so, that's a conversation I think I'd love to sort of open is, how do we work on moving our students around the community, even in light of school choice, but in perhaps, I know BVSD's got that first electric bus, hopefully, there's more to come. But how do we start to do so in a more environmentally sensitive way, but also in ways that minimize traffic and vehicle miles traveled? So, those are things that we would love to learn more from you guys on, but find ways to partner in which we can reach our collective goals.
I would say, Matt, that that aligns with our sustainability goals as a district as well. I think that there are things that will be challenging. Again, this open enrollment policy, right? And then, the laws that sit within Colorado. I think another thing that's challenging for us is just the shortage in our community of bus drivers, right? And we know that we have had to really, at the beginning of this year, had to very much rethink the way we do transportation. We eliminated about 20 routes and really tried to create more mainstreamed, you know, we merged bus stops, we put bus stops on main thoroughfare, so there's less going in and through communities as some efforts just to be able to maintain, so we can transport our students. We are committed to increasing our electrical bus fleet, believe that we have multiple electric buses at this point and plans to acquire more. I do think that the opportunity, Matt, lies as we think about declining enrollment and think about this as an overlay on a, of that issue, because how do you decide, how do you solve declining enrollment and potentially think about reducing traffic, reducing cars on the road, so on and so forth? So, I think that that's something that we will be considering. Solutions, though, the generating of potential solutions, I think, will be, will be an important aspect of that. What are some of the creative out-of-the-box ideas we could think about to transfer folks? I know that we're partnering with RTD, and we're partnering with all of the other transportation entities with VI, I believe we're partnering as well, Hop Skip Drive, just to try to create these opportunities for ride share as just a method of getting kids to school, but also reducing the number of cars on the road. But I would be open to that continued conversation. Do you see a path forward, or is this just kind of a big topic that you want to put on everyone's radar?
Well, I see Lisa's got her hand up, so I want to maybe see what she, her thoughts. But I think, I mean, I have certainly mine, but we'll, go ahead, Lisa, before I do.
Thanks. Bringing up this a little at our last meeting on this topic, Rob. And I guess I want to suggest again that I'd be interested in not just looking at the data we have on where folks are coming from when they're open enrolling to another school, but can we do some surveys and data gathering around how many of those folks are already using alternative transportation to get to OE schools? And the ones that are driving, how many of them are driving to schools that are close to childcare work destinations that they would be driving already? And I think if we can get that information, then we can get a clearer picture of how many people are driving single occupancy vehicles to a school, and that trip wouldn't exist without the open enrollment, and that's really the question.
Thanks for that point, Lisa. You know, I can't speak for all of council, of course, but I think one of the things that we've looked at certainly is thinking about how do we build these more complete neighborhoods where it's housing, it's transportation, it's services, and schools all, you know, self-contained, where that cross-town, cross-county transit is just not needed as much. And so, you know, a lot of onus falls on the city, too, to start thinking about our zoning and our land use in order to make those complete neighborhoods more fulfilling to meet those needs. So, I think those are some conversations that we need to have in partnership with you guys to figure out how best to make that work. So, I mean, that's my perspective on where to go. I'm sure my council colleagues would have either similar or different ones, but I do think there's a lot of synergy there.
Well, I think that's right, Matt. I guess I'm pointing out that for a lot of these folks who are open enrolling, I think in many cases, the schools they're open enrolling to may be closer to their home than the schools they're actually meant to enroll in. It may be closer to the bike path, or it may be closer to destinations they're already attending. So, I'm not sure that, I think there's more data there, and we're trying to figure out how these neighborhoods are working that would be useful in trying to reach the goals than simply trying to understand what would happen if we stopped open enrollment completely, which in fact, I think in some cases would increase the number of miles people are going.
Thanks for that, Lisa. Thanks, Rob. As long as we can keep the conversation alive and synergize, that would satisfy at least my reason to bring up transportation in this capacity. If there's a way to have council and/or some members of BVSD or staff have that regular check-in, so as we start to think about larger systemic changes, they're working in synergy with some of those, that data that Lisa's referring to and keeping that eye on the present.
So, it sounds like next steps would be to dig a little deeper on assessing current state and then finding a way to communicate where that is, and then consider the impacts or the potential partnership between city and school district. Does that sound like the right path for everyone?
It does, Neil. I'll see if my colleagues shake their heads as well.
Wonderful. Okay, the next topic, do we want to go to chief of police to talk about Boulder High? We want to make sure we get that in. I want to make sure I give you all that time.
Sure, Rob. Thanks. I raised the issue, so I'll just tee it up. We recognize the fact that BVSD operates more than a dozen high schools throughout the region. Boulder High School is one of those, obviously, a very urban high school. It has the benefits of being close to Pearl Street and downtown, but it also has some of the challenges that an urban high school has. Some of those challenges are recent. Some challenges date back to well before my kids went to Boulder High School 20 years ago, Go Panthers. And so, we have Steve Redfern, who's the deputy chief of police, who might speak to what the chief and the police department are doing with respect to some of the challenges the high schools face, particularly in the last few weeks.
All right. Thank you, Councilman Redfern. Good evening, council members and board members. My name is Steve Redfern. I'm the deputy chief of police here at Boulder PD. And specifically, I just want to talk briefly about a couple of the incidents that we've had over the last couple of weeks that have brought quite a bit of attention and concern. We've heard from a lot of parents over some of these issues, and I'm happy to report that we've had some, a little bit of progress. So, on April 20th, we had an incident in the morning where a gentleman came onto the school property acting erratically. It was the opinion of folks there that might have been under the influence of something. Unfortunately, he, we had three officers and a CUPD officer that arrived quickly and were able to kind of figure out who the guy was, but he left before we made contact. The next night, and on the evening hours during a game at the stadium, the same guy came back. We had four officers respond that time, and again, he was able to get out of there after making some concerning statements, which upset a decent amount of people there. Fortunately, we have been able to identify who this gentleman is. We have probable cause to arrest him. He does not have, if we can find a fixed address, and so, we are currently, if you will, have to be on the lookout for him. And when we do make contact with him, we have criminal charges regarding those two incidents back-to-back days at the school. Kind of as a result of those two incidents, we heard from a lot of parents. We got numerous emails regarding the incident at the school, specifically, parents concerned about encampments in and around the school. We have dozens of emails and work with city communications to properly respond to. As a result, on Friday, we went out into the area with our partners, with the public space reclamation team who handles overseas our encampment cleanups. And we located quite a few encampments in the Arboretum area, if you're familiar, and then a couple miscellaneous on the, kind of the creek path over there near the school. Today, after posting those for 72 hours on Friday, today, we returned with the city team, a multiple disciplinary team, and we cleaned up, there was 13 people that we contacted, about 15 tents in the Arboretum. We covered about eight propane tanks and over 100 used syringes. Overall, the team took about 1.2 tons of discarded trash out of the Arboretum. It was a pretty significant encampment there in that area. The majority of those folks seem to go over towards the municipal complex. We'll continue to work that area to ensure that students walking to and from school are able to safely do so. A couple of things there, last week, we had a bunch of rain, and so, the cleanups kind of ceased a little bit, and so, we're going to continue. We have, I think, more scheduled for tomorrow as well as Thursday. Overall, aside from those two incidents, aside from some of the issues that we're dealing with with the encampments, we have not seen a huge fight in calls for service in and around the school. Nothing thankfully that's of major concern, violent nature, any of those things, just kind of some general calls to us on just general things you'd expect in and around a high school. So, just for everybody's awareness, we are well aware that graduation is coming up for Fairview and Boulder High School. We're actively working with our partners to ensure that we're getting messaging out on impaired driving, especially in light of the recent crash off of Belmont. It's on our radar. We've heard from some parents that are concerned, and we're going to be putting out a decent amount of public information campaign. Our goal is by all stretches is to not have to arrest anybody. We'd love to do prevention ahead of time, encourage safe transportation, all of those things. So, you will be seeing a definite increase present in and around the graduation ceremonies at both schools in the coming weeks, just so everybody can safely celebrate. So, that's kind of the rundown on what we've been dealing with the last week or two.
Thank you, deputy chief. I'll turn to our board to see if there's any questions that they may have. Lisa?
Yeah, Rob, I don't know if this is the time, but I would love it if we could find a time to review what our MOU looks like in terms of having police officers on our property as far as what they can and can't do, or should and shouldn't do when it comes to interactions with members of our unhoused community, and making sure that our plans for graduation feel inclusive and friendly, and that we're not anticipating any sort of cooling effects for anybody who would be attending those ceremonies, if we're anticipating any increase of police presence.
And I guess I'll just clarify, we don't have any plans to have an increased presence at the ceremony. We mainly just want to make sure, our campaign is really about, going to be about impaired driving. So, we do have the graduation days on our radar and will be, you know, ready to respond if needed for anything, but we don't have a formal plan to do any sort of enforcement or anything on those two graduation days, if that makes sense.
Yeah.
But we're all, any suggestions if there's anything we need to discuss or review, please let me know, and we'll have this conversation.
Great. Thank you for that clarification. And so, Rob, maybe we can just review some of this MOU language around how this works.
We could put that on our prioritization list, for sure.
Thanks so much for that. Can I make a plug for us to make a little bit of time to discuss the annexation of 6500 Arapahoe, because we've only got four-plus minutes till we need to be at our next meeting? I can kick that off if you'd like, or invite maybe Kurt Bernhauer, or Nurya, or Carl Castillo, whoever might make sense for staff to weigh in on that or clarify.
Well, I appreciate that, Rachel, and I will say that Kurt is infinitely prepared to talk about it. We are here to support him. But it's been a great project that's been in the works for a while, and we're sort of excited to see how we can get that to the finish line. So, Kurt, if you are still on with us, if there's additional updates you want to share with how we're moving on that, that'd be great.
Yeah, thank you for that. I think this is, the annexation is directly linked to affordable housing project and manufactured housing facility. The annexation is also linked to the kitchen, which was established a couple of years ago on that site. And so, there's a lot of reasons to move the annexation forward. Staff has been working on this for about two and a half years, and we've been about a month away from completing it for about probably 14 months. And so, just seeing if there might be benefits to having more leadership involved in those, in that negotiation to try to get it across the finish line. And we've gotten some grant funding from HUD, from the state of Colorado, to move this project forward. So, we're very excited to partner with the school district on this. And I think staff has probably brought it as far as we can and probably need additional support at a higher leadership level.
Kurt, if I could ask, what's holding it up right now? I know that there was some legal questions that were involved, and I know that Nurya and I still have to get together to discuss this. I know that we had had a meeting and we had to get it rescheduled. What would you say are the sticking points right now?
So, it's hard to do that in a minute, but it probably, some of the sticking points relate to, you know, future transportation planning that could go on along Arapahoe. That's probably one of the bigger sticking points. And, you know, infrastructure along there. I will say, it feels like we've even made further progress in the last week. And I think with a meeting with yourself and Nurya, or inviting a council member, so I think hopefully, that would be enough to get it across the finish line.
The last update I got, I believe that there were some significant costs to the school district to get this done, and so, I believe that that was one of the sticking points. But I'm happy to make myself available over the course of the next couple of weeks to have a sit-down conversation, see what those proposed costs to the school district might be, and see if we can't get to some compromise so we can get this thing moving.
That would be great. We would appreciate that.
And Rob, just absolutely available as well, and so, hopefully, we can do that. And certainly, if there's a council member who wants to join us, you're welcome as well.
I imagine that any number of council members would be happy to join in that meeting. So, depending on the legal machinations, if staff wanted to invite one or two or the proper number, I imagine that would be a go. And we are, we're at 5:59 from our end, so we should probably hop off to not start our next meeting late. So, I want to say it's been too brief, but great to be here tonight and appreciate the partnership that the city has with BVSD, and I think we should do this again very soon and ideally in real life. I got a thumbs up from Lisa.
Thank you all so much. It was a great meeting with you. It's 6 o'clock here, so maybe we're a minute ahead of you, or maybe it's just taken a minute to end. we're a minute ahead of you, or maybe it's just taken a minute to end. So, thank you all so much.
Bye, everyone. Good night.